Sam.
Great. Good afternoon, everybody. Again, my name is Sam Harvey. I work with FEMA. I'm the individual assistance group supervisor for this whole response. I want to talk a little bit about the individual assistance program that is eligible to the declared county. So right now, I think we're working with eight declared counties, including here in Washington County and the city of Berry. This program is really intended for homeowners, renters specifically, who had uninsured losses, underinsured losses as a result of the floods, severe storms, landslides and mudslides. Anything from July 7th up until today and until we close the incident period. If you had damages from any of that time period, one of the things we want you to do is register for FEMA assistance. There are a couple of ways to do that. If you're depending on what is most comfortable for you. You can call into the FEMA helpline, which is 1-800-6233. It also happens to be remember, another way to register is to go onto disasterassistance.gov. It's disasterassistance.gov. You can register. You can create a profile so that you can get all of your correspondence that way. Upload documents and do a lot of the interactions with FEMA through the website. You can also download the FEMA app if you'd be more comfortable doing it on your phone. Same thing, you can upload documents, you can receive correspondence and notifications through that app. We also have ways to do it in person. If you're more comfortable talking face to face, having that one-on-one conversation with somebody, there are going to be a couple of ways to do that. We'll have here in the room and you may see around town are disaster survivor assistance teams. You'll see them with the FEMA vest. They're usually walking around in pairs. They might be going to your neighborhoods or just up and down Main Street. They are folks who are out there. There are boots on the ground. They're the folks who can help you register or can just give you basic program information, what to expect, when to expect it. And the last thing I want to mention is we will have a number of disaster recovery centers that are going to be opening. Right now, we have two. One is in Rutland. One is in Waterbury. So we're going to have those throughout the communities as we work with state partners to identify where the best location to put those to do the most to serve the communities. So any one of those entry portals is a great way to get your application started. A couple of things that you'll want to do, you know, you'll be asked for your basic information, where you live, contact information, a little bit about your situation. Once all that information is in, one of the next steps that you'll have to go through is you might be called or texted by a FEMA inspection services contractor. That's somebody who's going to contact you, set up a time to come out and meet with you at your damaged dwelling so that you have an opportunity to show them, you know, this is where the water was, this is the damage I had. As you're going through that, it's really, really helpful to keep receipts, to document anything that might have been damaged or you might have thrown out. It's not a requirement, but it certainly does help throughout the process, not just for going through FEMA, but you know, just your own accounting of the damages. That inspection is also where we start to get a sense of how much damage you had and therefore what types of assistance you might be eligible for. The types of assistance, I'll put them into three main buckets. The first one, if you are a homeowner, you may be eligible for housing repair. That's money to replace the drywall, replace the carpets, any of those types of pieces that may have been damaged. Now, what we're focusing on primarily is the envelope of the house. So the four walls, the floor, the roof, damage to major structural components or major components such as your furnace, your hot water heater, your electrical system. Those things that you have to have in order to have a safe, sanitary and functioning household. What we're not able to assist with are things like outbuildings. So if you had a shed, if you had a detached garage that was impacted, it's unlikely there would be assistance through FEMA for that. Driveways, private roadways, if you have completely lost access. So that is a fire truck, an ambulance cannot get to your property, then there may be assistance. If you had some scouring or some erosion on the side, but you can still get through, it's less likely that there would be assistance for that. So just trying to give you a sense of what might be covered. The next thing, the next bucket is what we call rental assistance. That's for folks who either are homeowners or renters who are displaced from their property. So maybe your apartment building, you can't go back because there was damage. You can't live in your home until it's been cleaned out. So you need to find temporary lodging. What we do is we provide up to two months of rental assistance right away to say, this is money directly to you. This goes in your pocket, your bank account, and you use that to find suitable lodging. So that could be a new rental, that could be, you know, whatever it is that is serviceable for you. The last big bucket I want to touch on is what we call other needs assistance. This is primarily your personal property. So if you had a living room set, dining room set, bedroom set, your clothes. To help with that, but it also extends to things like your vehicle moving and storage. So if your vehicle was damaged by the floodwater and it needed to be repaired or replaced, there may be assistance for that. If you had to be displaced and you have to move your personal property into a storage facility or something temporarily, again, keep receipts, there may be assistance for that. Also medical, dental, anything of that type that is not covered by your insurance, we can potentially help with. So there are a number of areas. So it's important that, you know, as you're registering, as you're going through the process, as you're speaking to that FEMA inspector, you want to make sure that you convey to them what the impacts that this particular storm had on you. A couple of sort of important steps and common hurdles that we see for a lot of people. The first and the biggest one is that FEMA is not allowed to duplicate anything that is covered by insurance. So if you have flood insurance, if you have homeowners insurance that will already cover the damage, if you have automobile insurance, FEMA cannot duplicate that. So one of the first and most important steps that we encourage everybody to go through is to file a claim with your insurance company, even if it's homeowners insurance and you know pretty well that they're not going to cover it. It's important to apply for two reasons. One, because let's test that policy. There may be a rider, there may be something in there you weren't aware of that may be able to help you. And secondly is because, as I mentioned, we can't duplicate insurance. So one of the things we'll ask you is, we need to show, there needs to be proof that your insurance won't cover it. So if you apply to your homeowners insurance, though, they may send you a denial letter that says this is not covered under your policy. Keep that letter. Make sure that you have a copy available for FEMA so that we can say, okay, insurance is not covering this. Let's move forward with the FEMA process. The next thing, and you'll hear a lot more about this from our SBA partner, but part of the FEMA process is to apply for the Small Business Administration if you are prompted to. And what that means is depending on the information you put in, you might be sent an application package from the Small Business Administration. This is really easy to look at and think, I am not a small business, therefore this must not apply to me. But as you'll hear, Small Business Administration has the ability to provide low interest disaster loans to not just businesses, but homeowners. And it's an important step. If you are encouraged to apply, so you're sent that application, take the time to fill it out and submit it. If you are made eligible, that's a great resource to help with, you know, the finishing touches or the personal property and a lot of the other things. If you are not eligible for an SBA loan, it automatically refers you back to FEMA for things like personal property and a lot of those other items. But if you don't go through the SBA process, if you are prompted to, you may leave some of that on the table. So it's an important step and it's one that's very easy to overlook. And the last thing I want to mention is that, you know, as you're going through these steps, there are a number of documentation items that you may have to provide, showing ownership. If you're a homeowner, showing occupancy, just that you lived there at the time of the event. Any missing, any of these things might affect your ability to receive assistance. And that's not to say that it's a hard stop. There are very, very few hard stops with the FEMA assistance process. But what you can happen, what might happen is you'll get a letter or notification that says you are not eligible for assistance because of this reason. That can be extremely frustrating. For everything that all of you have gone through, going through these steps in the bureaucracy, only to receive a letter that says you're not eligible is frustrating. I understand that. But it's really important to not just take that letter, read not eligible, crumple it up, curse my name and go about your day. It's important to read the entirety of the letter, find out what it is that is making you not eligible at this point. Find out what it is that you need to do or needs to happen in order to move forward. Because like I said, very few hard stops, just a bunch of places where, hey, we might need additional documentation. We might need additional information. If you read the letter and you don't understand what is being asked of you, call the helpline, go to a disaster recovery center, talk to one of our disaster survivor assistants and find out what is. You would like to tonight, they can take that registration. And I will be available all night to answer as many questions as I can as we go through. As I said, I know that there are a lot of steps and it can be very frustrating, but we have a lot of people here on the disaster who want to help you, who want to get you to a yes. So far, we've distributed, so put money in the pockets up to one, over actually $1.6 million already has gone out to survivors here in Vermont. And there's still a lot more to go. So we will be here for a while. The registration period for FEMA is 60 days from the date of declaration. So I believe that puts the date at September 12th. That is your last day to apply for FEMA assistance. So make sure you get your application in before that. With that, as I said, I'm happy to answer questions, but now I'm going to turn it back to Andre.
Thank you very much, Sam. We have many FEMA program experts here to answer your questions, but we won't go through all of them because the topic of tonight, the focus of tonight is you answering your questions. So we do have two non-FEMA agencies here to support you. We have John Roberts from the USDA Vermont Farm Service Agency to answer any agricultural related questions. And we have Ms. Emily Mitchie from the SBA. So Ms. Mitchie will talk to you all about her program before you ask questions, just so she can paint a broad picture, just as Sam did, about what they have to offer you. So Ms. Mitchie.
Thank you for having me. We covered a little bit already, the fact that the SBA loans money, not just to businesses, but also to homeowners and renters who've been affected. So if you have physical damage that has affected your home or your personal property, including your car, you may be eligible for loans for that. Another category, so we offer loans to address physical damage, uninsured, physical damage. But you don't need to wait for your insurance company to apply. In fact, you shouldn't. Part of the application process will involve giving us your insurance information. Settling up with insurance can take a long time. So I would urge you, if you have physical damage, go ahead and apply for the loan. You don't have to take it to, you can decide to take part of it. And another important thing to keep in mind is that for 12 months on these loans, there's no payments and there's no interest charge. The terms of the loans will vary, I think, from between about three up to eight percent. For homeowners, it's on the lower end of that. And then they're usually, I think, up to, they can be up to 30 years, but again, the terms will vary. So loans for physical damage, loans also for businesses who've experienced economic injury. So you may not have physical damage, but if you say you're a business in a nearby county and you haven't been able to make deliveries to an area that has damage or your supply chain has been affected, or you haven't been getting as much business as a result of the flooding in another area, you may be eligible for an economic injury disaster loan. And if you're a homeowner or renter, as we already kind of briefly, it was touched on that you should go ahead and apply for the loan as soon as possible. If you're not eligible, then you may be referred back to FEMA for additional assistance. But it's really important that you complete the application to get yourself through the cycle of all the resources that may be available to you from the federal government. And I'm certainly, there may be some information that I'm forgetting, but I'll be available to take questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mitchie. At this time, I'll toss it back to the town to determine whether we want to have come forward for questions or have someone move the mic out to receive questions.
Thank you, Andre. So we'll invite people to come up to those two microphones. If folks want to form a line, we'll start taking questions, alternating from each microphone. As a reminder for just the folks who struggled in, do try to keep your questions and comments real concise so that we can get to as many questions as we can tonight. And if we do start to go on, I may politely ask you to wrap it up so that we can cover as many questions as possible. So while those people get settled, let me just shoot a quick chat question from the Zoom to our panelists. One is our insurance representative recommended that we not submit a claim that we know will be denied because that could affect our insurance rate. Is there a way to avoid having our insurance rate impacted? I'm not sure if that's one the group here can answer, Sam, maybe.
Yeah, I could touch on that a little bit. That is a discussion you have to have with your insurance provider as to, you know, what might affect your rates by applying. But for the FEMA side, we do need some sort of notification from your insurance provider that they will not cover this. So if you can have that conversation with them and say, hey, can you just print me off something or send me something that indicates, you know, this type of damage is not covered under the policy of Sam Harvey, for example. That is something that we would be able to work with and might prevent you from having to go through the claim process. But you know, the exact details of that, I would have to defer to your insurance provider.
Thank you, Sam. And Andre, I know you wanted to mention something.
Just a quick admin note. So we do have a DSA support just outside those doors. DSA stands for Disaster Survivor Assistance. If you have some information you'd like to walk through with someone, they're here to help you with that. If you want to put a claim in for a register, rather, they're here to help you with that as well. If you've already done that and you want to check on the status, please, just outside those doors, we have a few folks here to support you and they have their connectivity and they can look up your cases and so forth.
Questions?
Let's start over here.
Hi, thank you. I'm Bernadette Rose. I live here in Berry City. I was downtown today at the Rainbow Bridge Community Center and they had a couple of questions. One is that they have had people coming in who have our tenants and have been not able to get any response from their landlords. And I'm wondering, what do we as a city or FEMA do for people whose landlords are, one was out of the country and the other said, I don't have money to house you someplace. You're stuck where you are. How do people deal with that? And the other has mold and water in the basement and the landlord occasionally comes by and takes a little water out, but it's not, it's becoming an uninhabitable place. And these two people didn't have another place to go. Besides, I guess the auditorium would be the only other option that I know of. Can you speak to that? How tenants, because we have 50% of our housing is tenant occupancy, how can we help empower our tenants to get their needs met by landlords? Because we're talking about landlords that aren't willing to allow volunteers into their buildings to help clean things up. So that's my question. Thank you.
If you want to talk about tenant rights or anything, you can mention, I can then cover them.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Bernadette. So the first thing that should happen is any tenants who feel they're not getting their questions answered, that the landlord is not responsive, they should contact code enforcement and we'll follow up there. So I know we've had some complaints come in. I know our fire marshal is reviewing those and we will certainly escalate enforcement as necessary and we will enforce the minimum housing ordinance. So certainly, please direct those people. I know not everyone has access to the website, but we now have a button right on the front page of the website for code enforcement to make it easier for people to find. So that would be the first step. You can also find their number as well and we will make that more broadly available for tenants who are struggling to find that. But that would be the first step is to make sure code enforcement is aware. And Sam?
Sure. And then getting a little bit to the FEMA process, if they are a renter and they feel that their home has been impacted so that they can't live there, I would encourage them to apply for FEMA assistance when they meet with that FEMA inspector. That's the time to indicate, you know, there's mold in here, you know, it's growing, you know, in the basement or it's getting into the property and allow that inspector to decide, you know, is this no longer livable, which would potentially make them eligible for rental assistance so that they would at least have some funding available to find other housing options. Yeah, I see the head shaking and I understand that right now there aren't a lot of housing options, which is a longer discussion, but I'll get into for a little bit later. And then the second thing that I want to mention is the state has requested of FEMA program called Disaster Legal Services, which is in the process of being approved and set up at this point. It's not operational tonight as we're sitting here, but it's something that will be available shortly. What that is, is essentially a hotline or a way to contact free legal assistance. Is no income requirement. Whether you make $0 or $1 million, you're still eligible to apply if you had uninsured losses. So whatever your financial situation is, FEMA assistance funds are grants. They are not loans. They are not considered income. So they won't have any effect on whether it's social security or any of those other income considerations.
Thank you. So fixing the Zoom. Let's move over to this microphone.
All right. My name is Don Mason and my father's house was taken by a mudslide on Portland Street where it's been deemed destroyed. And one of our questions is, who has to take that down? Who's liable for that? Does that go on him or are there resources to help him to bring the house down? Because there's no going back into it whatsoever.
Yeah, so this is unfortunately an issue that we're having to triage in real time. We have well over a dozen active landslide situations in the city that we are in the process of securing specialists and experts that can help us understand better the situations. We just don't have that capacity at the city level. So we're working with, we're seeking advice from our attorneys. We were seeking advice from our insurance company. I sought advice from one of the FEMA representatives earlier today before the town hall started. So we're trying to better understand that ourselves. At this point, what we're focusing on is immediate safety. So the landslides that we have identified as being dangers to people, sort of downhill of them or areas where there could be pedestrians we have shut off. So that's why Patterson Street is shut off, is closed off, for example. So I don't have an immediate answer for you, although just to say that we are actively working on this. We are trying to secure the expertise that we need to be able to give us the advice on how to move forward. And I'll turn it over to, I'm not sure who on FEMA would be able to assist with that one.
There's not a lot more that I can add on top of that. I know that FEMA and the municipality and the state will continue to look at all programs that may be available to help with debris removal. What exactly that looks like a week or a month from now, I can't say for certain, but there are a lot more discussions to be had about that.
So let me take a question from the Zoom. If someone has properties that have been damaged in multiple communities, can they apply once for all the properties or do they need to apply for each property individually?
So I'll start with that. From the FEMA individual assistance side, if the properties that were being referred to are businesses, I would have to refer that to the Small Business Administration as to how to apply individual assistance is aimed at homeowners and renters. If the question is referring more specifically to, you know, you own a home in more than one jurisdiction, you should be looking at your primary residence. FEMA individual assistance does not cover secondary homes. And just as guidelines, if you, you know, the address that you registered to vote, the address that you spend six months or more out of the year sleeping at, that should be looked at as your primary residence.
Well, I would add, yes, you may be eligible both for the physical damage loan and if you own those as investment properties or you're a landlord, you may be also eligible for the economic injury loans. As far as whether you're completing out, completing individual separate applications, I think you could probably just start to start one application and then you would be prompted from there, depending on the circumstances, whether you need to do more than one or if they say you have one business entity under which you own all the properties, then that might be a different answer than if you have multiple different business entities and you might have more than one application. But you could definitely visit one of the recovery centers in person and then be able to kind of assist you face to face with that question.
Thank you, Emily. Let's go to this microphone here.
I'm Richard Corey. I live at the very end of Vine Street next to the Stevens Branch. I've owned that house since 1981. Since 2002, it's been flooded five times, three times disastrously. I see several of my neighbors here and they're in the same sort of situation. It's a, I'm wondering if there's some consideration from the city or FEMA first to declare them as chronic flooding places that just aren't worth. worth. I'm 75 years old. I can't rehab that house, throw a hundred thousand dollars into it and have it happen again next year, which is really likely. I just, and I've got several of my neighbors who are all in the same boat. It was tragic. We had a fatality on our street and it's just, I'm homeless at 75 years old. And I, my future's a big question mark and I'm just laying that out there. So thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Richard, thank you. And I'm just very devastated to hear what you're going through and at this time of your life. And we know that Vine Street was going through a lot the night of the flood.
My wife and I are two Vietnam era veterans and it's just, you know, I'd try if I could.
Yeah. So Richard, I think that I'm getting myself very quickly up to speed on this process of bias and what the future means. I think from my understanding is that the city and the state will have a role in this moving forward. What I would say is that those decisions will probably come a little bit down the road after this immediate recovery. I see we have the mayor here. I see Councilor Lowe's on here. I think these are probably decisions that even above my paper, I think these are going to be citywide policy considerations about how we move forward. But what I do think is we have to become smarter about what our response is. Because you're right, this is likely going to happen again sooner rather than later. And we'll have to make some really hard decisions and how do we make the city stronger for the next time? Because it's not a matter of if, but when. So again, not an immediate answer for you tonight, although I know that this is something that will. Absolutely. Thank you, Richard. Anybody else from the team or forward? Andre? Okay, good. So let me just get a quick one in from the Zoom so we can make sure we get some variety. Is there help for people who are either emotionally or mentally overwhelmed or not that savvy with submitting claims? This person is thinking of the folks who aren't able to attend these types of meetings for various reasons, like limited access to technology and ability to get a ride, et cetera.
Sure. There are a couple of things to consider. Certainly if you're not comfortable applying online, downloading an application, I would encourage you to call the 1-800 number 1-800-621-3362. Talk to somebody on the phone, have them help you through all the questions in the applications. If you feel you'd be more comfortable face to face, I mentioned the disaster survivor assistance folks that are out there in the field. That's, that's one of their primary missions is to help us identify where are these populations that aren't able to get, get to us. So let's try to get to them. So if, you know, if we know that there are areas where there, you know, folks like that might be populated, let us know so that we can get our DSA folks into those areas. And if you do encounter them, certainly ask them about how to apply. They can walk you through that application. They're very good at getting the information in there. The second piece I wanted to mention, I alluded earlier to disaster legal services. Another similar program that the state has requested is something called Crisis Counseling Program. Again, that's not available as I'm sitting here, but it is in the works to be approved and rolled out. That is a, it's a helpline, a hotline where folks can call in, speak to a trained professional mental health provider, talk through some of those emotions, help get some, whether it's coping mechanisms or just things to focus on to help you get through this immediate period so you can turn your focus to your own personal recovery. So those are the two aspects I would mention.
I'm just going to amplify that a little bit. As we mentioned earlier, I'm in charge of the operational type of picture. And what we are doing right now, every single morning is we are taking the data that we have, looking for the areas of high access functional need areas, layering that on top of where the disaster is most acute and channeling resources in that area. We are doing that every single morning and will continue to reach out to the people so that we ensure in partnership with the state and the local community that we are reaching out to those people that may be challenged to get to, you know, the FEMA resources that we have now up at the auditorium. We also have several teams every day on the streets of Barry. You probably have seen them in their vests out there knocking on doors, making sure that we're getting to the people that may not have made it to these disaster resource centers or the resources that we have up at the auditorium. Additionally, and just one more thing is that we've assigned division managers, one to every county. And Craig over there is your division supervisor. He is your direct liaison to FEMA through Nick. If you're having issues that we're not addressing, you can get through Nick, Nick can get to Greg and we'll address them at a different level. We have 460 people deployed to the state of Vermont right now to try to support your needs. So we're working on it. We're concentrating on these access and functional need areas. We are acutely aware. Our, my boss in Washington DC has passed that down as a directive for us to make sure we get out there and do that. And we're every single morning, we're targeting that laser targeting that area. There, I'm going to let you.
In addition to, you know, to all of this focus, we also employ several people on this disaster, specifically as our disability integration advisors. Those are folks that are engaging with your disability advocates, Centers for Independent Living, other areas to bring them into the conversation, share information with them so that through their networks, our message and our services are more able to get out. We also have our civil rights advisor actually here in the room with us to ensure that everything we are doing, we are making sure that the needs of individuals are being considered and that nobody is, you know, through this process, losing any sort of civil rights.
Thank you. So Karen, you've been very patient. I just want to do one quick follow up because this is related. So it'll be quick, Bill, you kind of touched on this. But how long will FEMA staff, do we know how long FEMA staff will be deployed in Vermont? Is there, is that known at this point?
We can reasonably, we've been doing this for a while. So we can reasonably assume that some aspect of FEMA will be here for a long, long time. I mean, we're, what would you say, Sam?
So on the, on the individual assistance side, I will be here a minimum of 60 days. I already missed my dog. It's just going to be one of those. And then it will depend beyond the 60 days, which is that initial registration program. We'll begin these conversations with the state to say, what is the need in the community? Do we still need disaster recovery centers to be open? Are people still coming in? Do we feel like we have not fully accomplished our mission? And if the state says, hey, we still would like to have FEMA's individual assistance folks here on the ground, then we'll extend beyond that as long as the state and municipalities indicate that they have a need. Beyond that, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes on the municipal level for public assistance, for reimbursement, for hazard mitigation, all of these longer term functions where you're talking, you know, 18 months, a year or more that you might have folks here on the ground. So you'll see a presence here for a while. We will adjust it based on the need that we see and the feedback we receive from everyone.
There's different flavors of FEMA, but to answer your question, certainly over a year, there'll be some aspect of FEMA's support here to the state and we'll stay here until we answered the questions and the resources that are needed.
Thank you both. Karen, thank you for your patience.
Thank you and appreciate the presence of all these experts here today because like Mr. Corey and his neighborhood, our building and our neighbors have had at least four floods just since the year 2000. And I'd like to just quickly tell you some of the mitigation measures that we've taken and seek your advice on where do we go from here? In the old labor hall on Granite Street, we have moved the elevator machine, the boiler and the electrical panels all upstairs from the basement to the main floor. We have impermeable water wallboard throughout the basement. And we also have cement floors throughout the basement level. There's an emergency generator in case of power failure. And we have an electrical sump pump and pop-up valves throughout the building. And yet here we go again, we've had another dreadful flood in the building. We are extremely grateful to the city and all the volunteers who have come forward to help us. This has been true, I think, of Berry through the years, but it's not a solution to us if we're going to have a flood as Mr. Corey has said every few years. I'd appreciate your guidance. Where do we go from here?
We have a hazard mitigation division in FEMA that addresses these issues. We're scrambling to get more forces here deployed to answer issues like this. But the head of the mitigation division for FEMA Region One, all of New England, reached out to us today and said that he would call Nick personally and talk to him about what we have on the table, what our plans are to start to answer the citizens and Nick's and the state's concerns about, you know, the type of things that you're expressing. So I assure you that our mitigation division will be in touch with your local elected representative to answer those questions and get a longer range look at where do we go from here? While I'm on the subject, I just want to compliment you. As I mentioned before, Sam and I have been doing this and a lot of the people in this room have been doing this for a long time. And I was here, I don't know, a couple, two or three days after the flood and just amazed at the devastation in your town. And then driving here today, how much you've done in such a short time. It was amazing to see downtown and my compliments to you, especially to Nick. I've been to the community events that you've been staging. I've been up to the auditorium and every single time I see people representing your town, your city, trying to get it done and every single time I see Nick there too. So my sincere compliments to the dedication of this town to come back and we're going to do everything that we can to help you continue in your quest.
Thank you, Bill. And before I forget, Richard, I just want to make sure with what you share with us, there's relief organizations here. So I see our friends from the Red Cross sitting across from me. So if there's anything you need, just, there's people here to, perfect. Thank you. So let's, I think we're up to this microphone.
I'm Gary Hall. I'm one of the owners on 21 Vine Street, Richard's neighbor. I'm here for my daughter because I told her to go spend time with her kids tonight. She hasn't seen them for a week. I've seen so much damage in this flood. I was standing on the front porch and in the house during the flood because I knew what was coming when I looked at the bridges. The state of Vermont would not let us dredge these rivers a long time ago when they built, when they helped build a road from Woodstock, Vermont back to Bethel because the bridge sunk six inches on Irene. It's going to come again. I agree with Richard. It's going to come worse because of the weather changing. We have three houses in a row that are right on the same level. We all got damaged. I watched four foot of water come through and go across the road and come one foot from the top of the playground. And it can, it went into the playground. I didn't dare step off my property and the power was still on. When I stepped out, I was up into my neck of water to walk out. And then we helped rescue, yeah, got Richard and his wife rescued by a boat because the loader was locked and the emergency brake was locked and they couldn't release it. And I warned him to get his car out because I knew it was coming. I should have said get out completely, but thank God they made it. I'll tell you, we lost one neighbor that was a godsend in our neighborhood. We all stick together in this neighborhood. And now we lost our houses. And I've had FEMA twice down to this house. The basement is so dangerous because six by sixes that were help hold the house up, there's two of them missing. And it's full of mud and sewer. It undermined the garage and it came through so fast I didn't even dare move after I moved two animals to the second floor. I figured I was a dead man because I was standing in water and I knew it was above the outlets. And I didn't dare go pull the meter, but I finally got away from it. And it's, I'm 70 years old. It wasn't my concern. It hasn't been my concern beginning, it's family and neighbors. That's where I am. My kids, grandkids mean more to me. I've been there every day until late at night trying to help the neighbors or help my daughter. We're up to, we measured 21 inches in the house. Yesterday we started cutting four feet high. It's molding so fast. We stripped the walls and it's still molding fast. We stripped the kitchen, we stripped the bathroom, everything because we want to get the smell out of there, but the floors are going to be gutted on this place. It's that bad. And I know the foundation, I've been in the basement, but it's unsafe to have somebody else go in there because the way it knocked part of the foundation, I'm talking granite blocks that weigh tons and it moved it. That's the force of water we had in our neighborhood. The next time it's going to cost a lot more lives when it comes through because I've watched it and I agree with Richard and my neighbor Betty and her family and everybody else. Unless the bridges are up to stop the, to let the water go through or the rivers are dredged, it's going to happen again. This weather is changing so much. It really is. And I've been here all my life in Vermont. But my daughter already told me come here for a buyout to the city of Puma because we know it's going to cost way more than we got. We ain't got a drop of insurance to rebuild this house and I'd be here next July finishing it if we tore it all down and redid it again. And we wouldn't build it there if we did, I guarantee it. But it's that much damage in our basement and everybody's lost so much. You can come down the street and see the piles of debris we've got out there or behind their house or whatever, whatever's already gone. And it's everything they own. It's our lives, including the boat that we finally picked up manually, family, put it on a trailer and get it the heck out of there so we can work cleaning the rest. But we do what we have to do in our neighborhood, but we're asking for the help we need. That's why I came up and I got to go back down, do some more work, but I wanted to put my two cents in too for my neighbors. But please help us. Go buy out or whatever on these places. We need it. We can't survive another one. Appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here and we know that that's, we know how devastating it was in your neck of the woods. And there's a lot of people here to help. These people sitting up here with me are here to help. We have many people in the audience here who are making things happen. So, you know, make sure you see them. I see, I didn't mention the Salvation Army. I see them in the back corner there as well. They're here to help. Make sure you're getting meals from them and make sure you're getting water from them. So, yeah. Thank, thank you. We know, we know that you're, this was, that part of town was ground zero.
And we have representatives here for what we call Go Ads, voluntary organizations active in disasters. We have people that liaise with all of the volunteer agencies that are in your neighborhoods. If you need help reaching out or contacting them, we have people here tonight that can help you do that.
Thank you, Bill. Sue?
So thank you for being here. This is not the first flood that I have experienced in Berry and I am concerned looking forward how we can do better at protecting properties of all kinds, commercial and residential. So there are a couple of things I want to put forward. First of all, I would very much appreciate a handbook or a set of resources on experimental construction materials and methods that property owners could test maybe in their basement areas, maybe in their engine rooms, maybe in their elevator rooms. Because I really don't look forward to the prospect of having repairs done and then waiting for six to 10 years and seeing the same problems. I think that it would be helpful for FEMA to provide incentives for property owners to actually test certain new methods that could. that could prove to be very successful in other regions. I would love to be a part of a study that looked at some new approaches because I think all of us want to pitch in and try to prevent things like this happening again and again. So I would like to know if there's a handbook or a website resource. In addition, I would urge everyone here in this room to look at the regional hydrology planning process because I really also think that there should be incentives for municipal governments to invest in some test techniques such as sinking parking lots to serve as areas to pool water when there's a flooding event. We need to have financial assistance so that we can go beyond just running to fix, but rather being strategic and doing some long-term strategic planning. So I would love to know, first of all, give me the best name for the impermeable paint. Let me know about the plastic walls that I should be installing in my elevator room. Let me know about all the materials, let's say a submarine door that I can lock to prevent the amount of moisture that gets into my building. I need to improve what's there. I don't want to do this in six years. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. You're, you're thinking along the right lines, absolutely. So what I'm going to suggest is that when Nick talked to our mitigation expert, you know, that handles mitigation for Region One, that they bring this up. And then you want to talk to the FloodSmart program?
Sure. You, you asked about a resource book or at least a, a front door that you can check out to kind of start this conversation would be floodsmart.gov. That's sort of the, the government slash National Flood Insurance Program, NFIP. You know, that's their website for what you need to know about flooding, the stuff that goes into it. I don't know if it gets into the, the technical specs that you're looking for, but it'll be.
Looking for. I, I really want to have specific suggestions on construction materials and standards that would allow property owners to move forward with greater confidence. So if you have the time to maybe assemble some basic resources, surely you've tested some things out in other wet areas like New Orleans. And, and you've seen some hopefully positive results. We should have a way to pool those positive results and learn from it and actually improve what we're doing here in Berry City. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. I'm going to do a quick Zoom question before we go to this microphone. This question. Side, are we now required to have three bids to go forward with further repair of our roads and other infrastructure? That, that might be my finance strike. Sure. Are we now required to have three bids for any work on roads or infrastructure? Right here. Three bids to go forward with further repair of our roads and infrastructure.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Anytime that we're doing reconstruction in a public sector area, roads, buildings, bridges, it's imperative that the entity that owns that follows the procurement policy that they adopted. So if it's a, if it's a city, they would have a procurement policy on the number of bids depending on the amount that they feel that they're going to have to spend. If it's sometimes five thousand dollars, they just need to make three phone calls and get the lowest bidder. If it's five hundred thousand dollars, it's going to be a sealed bid that they have to, they have to put out into the paper, into the public notice and bring those in and have a bid opening. So there's many things to be considered. So they have to follow the procurement policy that was put into place and adopted by that entity, be it the city, village, even the county and state. So it's very important that has to happen. There are some other guidelines that you can follow within FEMA. If some of the smaller towns or villages don't have a, an exact procurement policy, they can take it up and ask the county what the county's policy is or what the state policy is to follow those procedures to make sure that the bidding is done fairly and equitably so that everybody gets a chance that is qualified to bid on that particular repair, has the opportunity to do so.
Thank you. This microphone.
Yes, my name's Chad Spencer. I live in Orange, Vermont. My zip code is oh five six four one, which is also shared with Berry. Which my county, so when the governor finally, whoever decided to say, okay, Orange County got approved because my house got my house got kind of damaged and I'm disabled. I got disabled when I was eighteen, but whatever. I just need dirt and so I'm like so I'm just trying to figure out, because when you guys, when they said that we did not have Orange County's wasn't in the damage zone.
So I believe, I just heard from Bill that it was. Yeah, so I'm sorry, can you repeat? I didn't catch your name.
Chad Spencer.
Chad. So Bill just shared with me that, that Orange was part of the declaration.
Like I said, but yeah, but that was later on you guys decided. So I was like, oh, great. So what, I mean, in my situation, on the last house that the mainland comes to, they turn around in my house and go off. So I'm like always in that like you said, these storms are going to come. I mean, they're in our back doors right now. So I did not expect my foundation to wash out. I just need dirt, but thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
Sure, I can speak a little bit to that. Just within the, the last couple of days, Orange County was added to the major disaster declaration, which included individual assistance. So residents of Orange County are able to apply for FEMA assistance. That is the process I would point you to. Make sure that, you know, as you go through, you, you have the inspector see that the foundation was washed out or the driveway isn't accessible, you know, make sure you, you point those things out. If you do have to, if you do have to.
Hey, what we're going to do, if it's all right with you, sir, is I'm going to ask Greg to get your name and we're going to point you at the right resources. Okay, sir? Sorry that you're going through all this.
Let's do a quick Zoom one. When will FEMA coordinate with individuals who receive services from the Vermont Center for Independent Living?
Sure. So I mentioned, or we mentioned earlier that we have a disability integration advisor who works with us in all aspects, including individual assistance. They have regular conversations with the Centers for Independent Living so that our message is propagated out through that network. So that is something that, that's currently happening, that's ongoing. If you feel as though, you know, your, your center, whether it's in your, your county or municipality has not made that connection with, with this disability integration group, we definitely want to get that information so that our disability integration advisor can reach out, include you, include your CIL in the, the conversations that are going so that you can get connected to all these conversations and resources that are going on.
Sam and I work with this person and she's wonderful to work with. It's going to be a big asset to this community.
Thank you. I think we were at this microphone, is that right?
Little Mart, no. I live in Orange, so, and I'm, I'm high and dry. I'm speaking for a landlord who's presently got two tenants and there's been a lot of effort to get it cleaned up. One of the problems is the previous flood from Irene, she had to redo the boiler, redo all the electrical panels. And so it basically is not something that she wants to do again. So we're looking at building a mechanical room on the first floor. But that's going to be a lot more expensive than just changing the panels and getting a new boiler in. So how does that relate money-wise with FEMA? Now, I already know that the landlord's insurance has said no. Is there more money available to get these problems out of people's cellars? So that when the next time it comes, all you have to do is wait for the water to recede. The we're toying with different ideas of moving everything up. Yeah, the washer, the dryer. If at all possible, because those are expenses that people are tired of redoing all the time. That's the one issue that we're, we're trying to find answers for. The second is Berry and Montpelier has Green Mountain Power for power. And they went around and pulled meters for safety purposes. And they will put the meter back in after a licensed electrician has inspected all the work, replaced everything that needs to be replaced, and then put their name down saying that this structure is safe now to be re-energized. Time constraints. To get to that point where that electrical panel is safe and the amount of electricians that are being screamed at, come to my house, come to my house. I see this as a major problem. Another issue too, I contacted the electrical inspector and if your RoMax got wet, you must replace it. So these are issues that need to be addressed. And again, money and time.
Sure. So I'm, I'm going to address those in reverse. The, with the, the first part, if a homeowner had to have any sort of electrical work or really any other work to, to make their home functional and safe, that's where that homeowners wants to apply for FEMA assistance because that housing repair money, that's what that's for, for paying a, an electrician, for, you know, paying a contractor to, to do that work. Whether you have, whether that homeowner has to pay upfront, you know, keep a receipt, keep a, a log of what, what might have been spent so you can show the FEMA inspector, here, here are my costs for, for the electrical work. So that would be the avenue. For your first question, a, a landlord is, is not someone that could apply for FEMA assistance for, for their rental properties. But I will defer to the Small Business Administration because that would be the avenue that that landlord would, would have to, to work through that. So I'll defer to SBA in there.
Yes. Loans are available for, for mitigation. I know that nobody really wants to take out a loan. They want to know about grants. And but the scope of what I know about disaster recovery is limited to the, to the loan programs. So if, for, for folks who are looking to take mitigation measures, I would encourage them also to fill out the application.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Just quick understanding, so there is no FEMA money for a landlord that has three apartments and that person, the landlord lives in the building. Does that change anything?
Yes, that would, that would change it. So if area, I would encourage them to, to apply for FEMA assistance. Now, if there's three hot water heaters, you know, for three apartments, that might be a different scenario. But, you know, at least get the application in, talk to that inspector, find out what, you know, the extent of the assistance that can be provided.
And a follow-up, if because the landlord lives in one apartment, is there financial help to raise a mechanical room above ground?
There is potentially through sort of the, the mitigation money that can come through FEMA's individual assistance. So if that's something that that landlord is looking to do, especially if it's going to be a requirement either by the city, municipality, that is definitely something that you want to get an indication of so that, you know, as you're talking to that inspector, you say, hey, this needs to be elevated so that we don't have this. There may be additional funds for, for mitigation. So make sure that that is articulated to that inspector when, you know, after you register and go through those steps.
Is City Berry going to, of course, this is a FEMA meeting, but is the City of Berry looking to mandate people get their heating systems out of sellers?
I, I don't, I don't have an answer for that yet. But I'm sure we'll be evaluating all sorts of things to, to make the city more resilient. Thank you. This gentleman over here.
I'm Jeff Norway. Three properties on Main Street between Maple Avenue and Brook Street. Much like Bay Street, they get flooded all the time. We're actively working to fix them. So if the buyout thing is realistic, which I don't think it is, but if it is, everybody's wasting a lot of money fixing the buildings right now. So either it's realistic or if it's not, if it's realistic, you need to expedite it. If it's not realistic, you need to be honest with people and let them know. Because everybody's wasting a lot of time and money right now fixing their buildings. And if buyouts are going to be available, what streets and areas needs to be determined like now? Because people are spending money every day fixing their buildings.
Yeah. Yeah. So the yes, that, that is a very difficult place to, to be in. The states, the municipalities in FEMA are, are going to have discussions about what a buyout looks like. Now, this is a, it's a state municipal-led process. So it's up, we take the guidance from, from those entities as to what are the areas, do they even want to do this? And it's FEMA money really on the end of it that, that pays for it, but we take the direction from the municipalities and states. So unfortunately, I can't give you a good timeframe because I don't think one exists right now.
I just picture it taking three to six months. Most everybody's going to spend a ton of money fixing their buildings. Which is all a waste of time and money if it's going to happen. So I guess bureaucracy and government sucks, but we're all wasting time and money.
This gentleman here.
Hi. Hi, my name is Richard Gilbert and I live at one Washington Road in East Berry. I want to thank FEMA first for being one of the few organizations that has followed through, come to see my house and put money in my account. Unfortunately, the money that went into my account is like giving a starving child a small cookie for what's happened on my property. So I know that I can now appeal it. That takes sixty days and then you have ninety days to answer me back. That's a hundred and fifty days out. That's November in this state and that doesn't work. Secondly, I'd like to raise an issue about the amount of help that is going to the outlying communities. We registered with two-one-one on Wednesday, heard nothing. I registered a week ago in the park at the library and we've been talking back and forth for help. And finally, they said, oh, we can't come out there. We can't go past a certain point in Berry. I went to the town hall in Berrytown and they said, we don't have facilities to help you. So I'm very disappointed and upset with Vermont Strong or people helping people. So I would just like you to know this and be aware of it. Thank you.
Sure, I'll address the appeals process. The, the timeframe that you listed, you have up to sixty days from the, the date on the determination letter to submit your appeal. Now, that doesn't mean it's, it's going to take that long for a decision. It, it could be a lot shorter. It depends on a lot, but if you have Additional damages that you feel weren't covered, you know, those are the things that I would make sure, again, you have documentation receipts for. Submit that with your appeal letter to say, you know, the these things were not addressed during my inspection. I still have these these costs to see what additional funds are available. The the timeframe, I'm, you know, I'm not making promises, but that, you know, 60 days plus. Plus is is not what you would be looking at for a response on on appeal determination.
And in terms of the voluntary organization, so the the state is trying to gear. Point everyone towards 211 and therefore crisis cleanup, so they can. Get A, get a sense of where people are asking for help and to allocate the resources correctly. So with that in mind, however, let's talk to our. Voed people here to see if we can help out. So as soon as we're done here, come and see it.
Yeah, and and we know 211 has, you know, had issues and that's put it lightly. But that continues to be the direction that we're we're asked to keep diverting people so that they can be registered and and I. I know it's been a challenge. They have. Multiple numbers listed if if the actual 211 is is not taking the call. We've listed those on our website. On the the tab of where people can go to if they need help. But that's that's where the triage point is happening.
This is the thing, we went on Tuesday and asked, called 211, they said, don't call us right now, we're still in recovery. We called on Wednesday, they took our name and number and everything, so we're registered, we're in the registration, you know? I mean, it's just, it's just. Very sad that on the outlying communities, you don't see the help coming. I want you to be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Over here in this microphone.
Hi, my name is Tim Hutchins. I'm a, we got a family business, Hutchins Roof and Company. And we are down in a forgotten part of Berry, which is West Second Street. And FEMA came in, tagged a room. As hazmat. Does FEMA come and clean that up?
Do that one more time, I'm sorry, repeat it, so.
We have one bay. In our old stone shed.
Okay.
That FEMA tagged as hazmat oil to where we worked on vehicles.
Oh, they, it's a hazardous?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the whole swill we've cleaned up has been hazardous, but beyond that, the room they tagged. Does FEMA come in and clean it? Who cleans it?
We're gonna, so unfortunately, at this point, I don't think we have a good answer on that. FEMA typically doesn't come in and. Make that type of determination unless we were trying to get information to. Our partners at the Environmental Protection Agency for their cleanup efforts. So I'm sorry, I don't have a good answer for you, but I I will circle back with our team and I'll I'll do my best to get an answer back to the manager here.
Yeah, we have EPA up here deployed with us, so we can reach right out and get you some answers on that. So before before you go, we'll get your name and get back to you on that.
Hutchins Roofing.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I have a question from the Zoom. Someone here says, I have heard from people in the community that if you have received funds from FEMA from a previous disaster that you may not be eligible. This time, is this accurate?
Sure. The last FEMA declared disaster in Vermont was in 2011 after Hurricane Irene. For the the properties that were impacted by Hurricane Irene, if you applied for FEMA, if you received and accepted assistance. If your property is within the special flood hazard area, so basically the 100 year flood plain. FEMA would have put a requirement on you to to get and maintain flood insurance on that property. FEMA would have paid for the first three years of it, the rest of it would have been your responsibility to maintain that. If that requirement was placed on you. And if you had damage this time and applied for FEMA assistance and you did not maintain that flood insurance requirement. Then that scenario, I know that was a lot of ifs, in that scenario, you would not be eligible for. For FEMA money to repair the structure. Rental assistance, personal property might still be an option. If you are not in a flood hazard, a special flood hazard areas, if you're not within that 100 year flood plane. None of that applies to you, you can ignore everything I just said. It's only for that. That small focus of the population that may not be eligible for assistance.
That, is that Sue? Can't tell.
Thank you all so much. I'm Sue Minter from Capstone Community Action. We're one of the community service providers in the area, also affiliated or connected to the S E O C. I wanted, because it came up earlier, I want to make sure that it is clear there is a Washington County Mental Health Hotline. And it's eight zero two. Two two nine zero five nine one. I'm sure you can put that up on the city website. I wanted to make sure, even though we were flooded for the first week, we are now open at Capstone on Gable Place. Our food shelf is open. We have. Our Community Kitchen Academy making 300 meals a day, which we can distribute or you can get at our food shelf if you're able. If you call us, you, we may be able to provide a ride for you to get to assistance. I, we are also deploying extra support to support FEMA application assistance. And I do want to affirm that there are many, many folks in this community who do not have a computer. Or even a phone or access to power. So I'm so happy to know you're out receiving those folks because. We know that sometimes we are a trusted place for them as well. We might invite you to do an assistance in person if that makes sense. I just wanted to put that out there. I am concerned because we also know there are many people who are renters or homeowners who are staying in their homes. Even though they have been severely impacted and I'm concerned about the health. Of living on a second floor when the first floor. Has been flooded. I'm really concerned that that is happening in large numbers. And I'm wondering whether and when or if FEMA comes to support the state for, we're so grateful to the Red Cross. And I know many people are accessing that. I know others who may not be, whether they are survivors of domestic violence and others who we're trying to get assistance for. Is there a time or a threshold when FEMA comes with other resources, the FEMA mobile homes? Or something like that, so we can have longer term. Support and individual rooms or spaces that might feel safer for people in the long run. Sorry for all the questions.
No, I'm gonna let Sam, the smart guy in the room, answer most of the questions, but I want to thank you and your organization. I had an opportunity to talk to some of your people up the auditorium site. Wonderful people, the services that you're offering are terrific. Thank you very much for your support. So that's the general acknowledgement of, we have DSA people, you know, people that were. In that same room and I encourage the the Capstone people to go over right across. Grab a FEMA person and say, you know, you need to talk to these people, you need to help them, so we'll continue to be there. I'll give you my card before we leave if I can help, but let Sam. Answer the details of your piece.
Sure, and. Certainly, if Sue, if you or if any other community groups are are having. Anything, a a community luncheon, a a registration day where you feel it would be beneficial to have. Representation from FEMA to to come out and assist with registration, you have somebody there with an iPad who can who can do it right there and answer questions. Get that to 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 Craig, get it, get it into our team here so that we're aware of it. If you have a request to to have folks out there, we can try to to get them there to help with it. To your your other question about longer term housing, and this is the question I deferred right at the beginning. Because this is everywhere in the country, a challenge, this housing question. And there is no good immediate. Going on behind the scenes, going on right now, I was looking at it today. Is. Essentially a housing plan. What are the available options through FEMA? You mentioned FEMA trailers. You know, that's just one part of the the FEMA direct housing that that may be available to the state. So we have to work with our state partners to say, what are the various pieces that are out there? What actually makes sense for Vermonters? You know, we can't bring in campers that aren't weatherized and and expect that to work throughout the winter, so you know, looking at what. What those limitations are, what works for the the community and come up with. With a strategy to say, okay, we're going to use programs A, B, and C. To help roll out and provide, you know, that that intermediate to longer term housing. Until the community has an opportunity to to answer some of those bigger, longer term questions, things like buyouts, things like mitigation that are going to take a while to to answer, so. That's, I know that's an unsatisfying answer because there's nothing immediate about it, but just know that these conversations are happening, they are going on and. We will continue to have different programs that are are rolled out, you know, as we get into the the weeks and months of recovery.
And I would just add too, I mean, you you laser focus on the the issue, I I the the disaster coming after the disaster. We were already in a housing crunch well before this hit. And we've talked about this at the staff level at the city and and one of the challenges is. Were we even to be successful getting this assistance from FEMA for temporary housing, where would we put it in the city? You know, we're four square miles. We we, you can go to flood plain, as Bill mentioned. And we, you know, we just don't have the land available, just naturally, just our geography is conducive to it, so. Again, not also not a satisfying response, but I I think you're you're right to focus on that coming challenge because it will be severe. Ellen, did I see you coming up towards the mic? Can't hide forever.
While we wait, I have a quick admin note to put out as well. If you came tonight to be registered for FEMA assistance, we have. Support outside the doors, so please see them. And secondly, regarding debris and hazmat and talks with the state. There there's guidance for debris removal. You get that from 211. By reaching out to 211, they can talk to you about debris. Hazmat is a separate thing, and I want to give this number to anyone interested in learning about more regarding the state and hazmat. It's eight hundred six four one five zero zero five. That's the state's hazmat hotline, and this is important because we want to get that hazardous material as far away from you as possible and as quickly as possible. That number again is eight hundred six four one five zero zero five.
I was, I'm Ellen K. I live on East Street in Berry. I was. Pretty much gonna follow up on what Sue Minter said about, we thought we had a housing crisis before. We were arguing in this town about what's going to happen to the people exiting the motels. Two, three months ago. And now people are exiting way more than the motels, in fact, and some of the motels. We've run into, I've been part of the volunteer effort and I want to give an amazing. Shout out to the Rainbow Bridge Community Center, who has deployed people from the second day on. And other volunteer groups, but we are just volunteer groups. We are just people who had to clean out our own basements and then went and helped everybody else. And we've heard from people. In the past couple of days, it's been really scary what we've been hearing from people. Older people, there was a gentleman up on Washington Street in his basement, sitting in a chair. Who has mobility problems with a shovel, just pushing it and crying. There are people, I think, who are afraid to tell FEMA what's going on in their house because they have no other place to go. So what Sue referred to as people living in unhealthy situations. Really frightening. And I can't help but think of Hurricane Katrina and what happened there in the larger sense with poor people being pushed out. Of their neighborhoods. Whole blocks being demolished and developers swooping in. And building upscale properties. So I'm hoping that we will take a really holistic look. At this as we rebuild. And that we don't disadvantage the people who live in the lowest places in our city and are subject to everything that happens tenfold. As opposed to the people up on the hills. You know, I know this is way out of everyone's range, but I think it needs the environmental justice. Needs to be taken into consideration here, especially as we rebuild.
The one thing I would like to address in there because it's it's an important point. I mentioned that FEMA inspectors come out to to assess the damage. Whatever they find, whether they, you know, whether they find mold, whether they find. Major damage or whether they decide that the the building is destroyed. That is not, that determination is internal to FEMA. It it doesn't convert to. Red tagging the building or making it so that, you know, legally you can't live there. The FEMA determinations about damage. About what's in there. Really just influence our programs in our action, so I would encourage folks that if they do have those concerns. That, you know, we are not going to come in there, see something we don't like and say, I'm going to go tell the the city and and you're going to have to get out. That would have to be through the municipality.
Code enforcement.
So while we're on this subject, there's always questions about FEMA inspectors or does these people work for FEMA? Or are the people on the street that are walking up my street? Are they really people from FEMA? Every single person, without exception. Has a FEMA badge. And our contractors have badges too. If they don't have a badge, they shouldn't be representing FEMA. So if there's concern in your neighborhood. Call Nick and I'll be all over it, but every FEMA representative will have this with them. Rest assured that if they have this, they are with FEMA.
And just for colloquialisms up, the reference to badge is not an actual law enforcement type badge, but an ID card.
Good point. Yep, thanks, yeah. I'm not that important. Bernadette?
Thanks, I wanted to, thanks Sue. When Capstone's down, I feel like the whole world is crumbling. And when I saw Capstone was back. I knew we were going to be having some great leadership there. Berry is home to many nonprofits that serve our county and state. I don't know any other place that is as densely populated. And how many of them besides Capstone Mosaic, which was formerly called the Batter Woman's Shelter? That have been totally disabled and people have either had to move or not had access to them. They're not homeowners, they're not businesses. How does FEMA interact with them? And what can we do to support them because they're what not only keep our city alive, they keep our people, our county and our state healthy. Like the Washington County Mental Health, we referred to, that Sue brought you the number of. They have a down, a building downtown that serves people and their first floor has been. Something that they're cleaning up and they'll be back in business, but there's just not access for all of those services, so thank you. And thank you for being here tonight and Nicholas Anonymous, thanks you.
Sure, so the, I would like to highlight two folks who have been lurking in the back. Those are our voluntary agency liaisons. You got Rose, if you can. So those are the folks that we have out in the communities that are specifically. Working and coordinating with our voluntary agencies, our nonprofits to. To engage them so that those agencies, nonprofits understand what's going on. If they have questions, they have a an avenue to to ask them, they can get brought into the response and and recovery process. Or at least just, you know, have that access to to what's going on. And I'm going to put Tim on the spot just a little bit to talk about public assistance for private nonprofits. And I'm going to put Tim on the spot just a little bit to talk about public assistance for private nonprofits. You're welcome.
Hello again, Tim Baker, Public Assistance. Private nonprofits, we encourage them, we encourage all of the residents to apply with individual assistance. And the PNP's, we encourage them to apply through public assistance. We will go through the application, determine if it's eligible for assistance. If we find a middle ground or if we find a question, we'll reach back to you and ask you to define it more. We're here to say maybe, get me to yes. So I'm going to need you to support me. Bring those applications to us. We're going to come back with questions to see what is eligible that we can help you with. I can't give a blanket thing to say everybody's eligible. I'd like to, but I'm not Oprah Winfrey. I have to go with what the rules are. So bring those things to us, we'll discuss it. If there's an issue, if there's a gray zone, we'll reach back out to you for more answers. You would be going through the website, you'd be going, I'm here, got here last week. I will be connected at the hip with the state. So your application for that, for your request for public assistance will go through the state. They will get it, they'll do the initial validation and then they'll pass it to our legal team just to make sure that, you know, if you're a nonprofit, that all of the things with the IRS are in order. Then it will come to me, I'll do the final review. If there's still a question, I'll get back with you. But most of the time, the state helps vet a lot of them because they know you. You are the part of the state, you are here. So, and then once it gets to me, it's usually pretty good and we'll see where we can help you in that long run. I'm, I'm Right now, I would ask you to go to the Vermont website, Vermont State. I don't have that website with me, I apologize for that. I would ask you to start there.
I have a question from the Zoom, which relates to the issue about the identification tag. So with people who are blind or visually impaired, how can they confirm that someone they are talking to works for FEMA?
Yeah, so for those folks, if they're not able to verify visually by seeing that, yes, that's a FEMA badge, they can call into the 800 number, 1-800-621-3362. Have that conversation with somebody on the other end to say, hey, there is an individual here. They claim that they're representing FEMA, I don't know who they are or exactly what their role is. That person on the line will be able to, you know, if this is individual assistance, they'll be able to look in their file and say, well, yes, you were assigned an inspector, they put a note in that said it was assigned for an inspection today. That way you can work to have that verified through the 800 number. So again, 800-621-FEMA. Ask them, what is this person doing here? Can you verify that they do work for FEMA?
Thank you. Another question from Zoom. I've seen a lot of confusion online about the difference between calling 211 for identifying areas for disaster declarations versus FEMA initial responders identifying areas that need help versus formal FEMA registration. So it might help to clarify that if they haven't already. So I guess I'll start with the 211 and then turn it over to our colleagues here for the FEMA registration. So the 211 is the intake for the state and the city. The relief organizations that are here helping people doing the muck outs are getting fed information that is generated from 211 reports. So if you need assistance, I know the most prevalent issue right now is the muck outs. If you need assistance with muck outs, for example, you should register those with 211. They are sifted into crisis response application, which our relief organizations are using to deploy their teams to help people clean out their homes. It's also, 211 can also be used for any other sorts of assistance that are needed for the flood. But I know that is really on the top of people's minds, the muck outs, and that's how you get assistance for that. I'll turn it over to Sam for the formal registration, which I think is separate from 211.
Sure, and I certainly understand that question there. There are a lot of layers and it is a bit confusing. So 211 exists year round, 365, as a front door or a portal to, if you have immediate needs for services, you call in and you can receive referrals from there. The, during a disaster, the way that the state of Vermont has set up their sort of information collection process is through 211. In order for FEMA to verify that, yes, this is a disaster, we have to get information from the state that says, hey, this is how many homes were damaged. This is, you know, where they are. So that's why we encourage people to call into 211 to report your damage because it directs FEMA to the towns, the neighborhoods, the streets that are impacted, so we can go out and verify it. Within that process, the next step is for FEMA to go out and do that verification. We did it in Orleans County today, we did it in Orange County a week ago. And we may continue to do it if directed, but that is FEMA going out to say, yes, this person called in. The state tells us that home is destroyed, let's go out there, let's put eyes on it, let's confirm it, we'll count it. And then that's what helps gets you to the major disaster declaration. So I'm sorry to go into all the sausage making on the backend. But all of those steps, calling 211, having, you know, the initial FEMA come out just to determine the, you know, do what we call preliminary damage assessments. None of those are the same as registering for FEMA assistance. That still has to be that homeowner or renter initiating the call to the helpline, going on to disastersistance.gov, downloading the app, talking to disaster survivor assistance. That, you know, those avenues are the way that you actually submit an application for FEMA assistance. All the other things, the 211s, the, you know, the preliminary damage inspections are just part of what it takes to get the state to the place where FEMA assistance is available to them. So bottom line there, if you have not called the helpline, if you have not gone to disastersistance.gov and put in an application, you have not yet been registered for FEMA assistance.
Thanks, Sam. And just to follow up on that, the URL for that website, it's grantee.fema.gov. I've put it in the chat and we'll post it as well. But that's for the, that's for public assistance, so that'll be really something that the city and nonprofits can use as well. So that'll be in the chat, we'll make sure it's posted on our website as well. Sue?
Thank you very much for organizing the meeting. I have a favor to ask of you. If one of you from FEMA could be a point person to review the content of this meeting and take note of the questions where you didn't have a direct response, where maybe you had to do a little bit more research, maybe the question took you off guard. It was something that came from, you know, the left field. We have a lot of questions from a lot of different types of community members. And what makes me feel very uncomfortable is attending a meeting and feeling like there are a lot of punts. And so I need somebody to say, I'm going to be the point person. I'm going to go over this list of questions raised by the community. And I will be the person who actually wrestles this down and comes up with reasonable, concise responses that will make a difference to a community in need. Could I see a volunteer who might go over this event and actually spend a little bit more time? It's like taking minutes really, going over, what are the action items? What could we do better? Is there anyone here who would volunteer to be that point person?
Oh, let me, oh, please, let me.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. I've been taking notes, I've been underscoring and outlining and nudging Sam as we go along. But as the kind of coordinator for this division, your area, I will take responsibility in that regard, ma'am. And I hope I live up to the expectation. I'm scared, but but on a serious note, you've brought up excellent, excellent points and they deserve the meritas of the questions. So we'll follow up.
Over here. Hi, my name is Chuck Cissio, I own Cissios Plumbing and Heating. We're hearing stories that we need to now move all of our equipment or people's equipment up out of floodplain. And it's been really hard to know what has to be done, who pays for it, how it gets done. Like you noticed, we get things done in Vermont. So we've already started to put a lot of stuff in. I don't want to do things to my customers twice. So the quicker we could have guidance as to what we need to do, we can get it done. But we need the guidance.
Sure, so in terms of the actual codes and regulations for the municipality, I would have to defer that to the town. But what I can say from the FEMA side is we want people to not delay in doing the repairs that they need to do. FEMA assistance, whether it's housing repair, rental assistance, personal property, goes to that survivor. So the survivor can pay for, for example, your services upfront and then use FEMA money to backfill it. Or if they would rather wait till they have money in pocket and then engage your services, they can do it that way. But on the FEMA side, we do not, to that level, specify, you know, what you have to spend that money on. If we give you money for housing repair, you have to use that money to repair your house. But in terms of, do they have to use it to elevate? From the FEMA answer is no, they don't. And that's going to be up to that individual as to, do they want to take the extra time, money and effort to elevate it or do they want to put it back? And then in terms of what is actually required, you know, that is up to the municipality to tell you or to give you heads up of any changes.
And make sure you're documenting, documenting, taking pictures of all the work that you're doing. Make sure that it's well documented as you go along, please.
Do we have any, there's no more questions standing in the Zoom? Is there any last takers here in the room? For questions? Thanks, Carol. For those who maybe didn't hear the question, although Carol is loud. The USDA flood mitigation buyout program from Carol's research, she believes that we are not eligible, but we're posing that question to the USDA rep here.
So my name is John Roberts. I'm the state executive director of the Farm Service Agency for USDA. Unfortunately for you, USDA is a huge umbrella organization. My agency does not cover flood mitigation. My, what I do is disaster relief and risk management for crops, livestock and soils. So you have to be a farmer of some form or other. So I'm afraid I cannot answer that question and I'm sorry. The best possible solution I can give you right this second is to go to USDA.gov, which is again, a huge website. You know, we cover, we have RMA, which is the Risk Management Group. We have Rural Development, we have, we have all the food programs for assistance. Those all are under the umbrella of USDA. So I'm sorry, I cannot answer your flood mitigation question.
That does not mean we're not going to get it answered. So either work through Craig or Nick. We have USDA representatives for the other part of this enormous organization working with us at what we call the Joint Field Office that we can reach out to get that question answered or at least point you at the resources that we need. So if you just hit me afterwards or Greg or something, I'd be happy to help.
And your emergency management department for the town, we're going to feed information back to them. So as far as accountability, well, how do we get that question or answer back? If you would please go to that website and if you can provide that website to the folks here and the folks who may be watching, they can check back for responses to some of these questions.
Yeah, so everyone go www.berrycity.org. And right at the top is a banner for the July 2023 flood response. That'll get you to all of the resources that we have for the flood recovery, which will include any follow up from this town hall meeting. Follow up. Berrycity.org, yep. So yeah, and there's a big banner at the top where it says flood response and you click there, that'll take you to everything you need. So I put out a last call for questions on the Zoom, there are none. I see nobody making their way to the microphone. So I think unless there's anything else to add from any of our partners, Emily, Andre, good? Okay, so okay. So thank you, we'll wrap the meeting tonight. Thank you everyone for being here. Like I said, we have a long road ahead, we have some people here will help and we'll have some additional answers. I want to really thank all of our partners for making the time to come and do a meeting for Berry so that we could get some of your questions answered.
Thank you very much.
And for SBA, thank you, Emily.